Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. The meeting for the zoning Board of Appeals, July 30th, 2014, will come to order. Row call.
Mr. Bacilli? Mr. Corrin is absent. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mazzoni?
Present.
Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Present.
Present.
Ladies and gentlemen, it appears right now that we do not have enough members to vote. Mr. Corrin is due to arrive, and there will be four members to vote. That would only allow for one member to vote no to decline any of the applications on file here. So, we will offer each applicant to, after we do the public hearing, to make a request to continue until our next meeting, which I believe will take place on August 13th, if that's sufficient with the other members, due to the fact we don't want to prolong it till the end of the month. So, as you come up and address the members here, you will have the right to ask for continuance until August 13th.
So, our first calendar item number?
The first application before the board is application A 1414, a special permit application, continued from the meeting of June 25th. This is the application of Merck Brothers Realty Trust Investments, LLC, 193 Crescent Avenue, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to reconstruct a non-conforming single-family dwelling on lot 79 at 57 Calumet Street, Revere. The applicant has submitted a revised plan to the board illustrating the parking spaces for this proposed single-family dwelling.
Is the applicant in the audience?
Yes.
Okay. The microphone is on, so please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Don McDonald, 325 Central Street, Saugus, on behalf of Merck Brothers, applicant.
James McCario, 193 Crescent Ave., Revere.
Yes, sir. We would like to go ahead, if possible, if you have enough to vote to... I understand there's still one more member that we need to... Should we wait for them, or are we going to go ahead?
You can continue with the hearing.
Okay.
Where this is a continued hearing?
This is a continued hearing. We went through the... This is a non-conforming structure located at 57 Calumet Street that we're seeking a special...
He is on the green buttons on. Could you just push that down toward your mouth a little?
Hello? Okay. Yes, we're seeking a special permit at 57 Calumet Street, seeking to reconstruct a 2.5-floor non-conforming single-family dwelling. The existing structure is non-conforming based on the setback and the lot size. The proposed plan is a new single-family structure, smaller in size on a footprint 20 by 50, and it extends the setback to 18 feet. The special permit under Chapter 40, Section 6, is based on the finding of the board tonight, presumably that the new structure is not more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. We presented photographs of the existing structure. It's a decrepit, non-occupied cottage. It's very close to the street. It's one-story. It's going to be demolished, and a new, brand-new house built. There's... The parking was not accurate on the previous plan. We now have the accurate plan with two 18 by 9 parking spaces off-street. That's all I have. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to ask them, answer them.
Thank you. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing? Any members? We have to wait for Harvey. All right. We'll continue on with our public hearings and hopefully be able to vote on this this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The next application before the board is application A 1416. This is a special permit application, continued from the meeting of June 25th, 2014. The application of Michael Colletti at 30 Oak Island Street, Revere, requesting a special permit to enable the appellant to reconstruct and expand an existing non-conforming garage This is the application of Alexander Capicella, 25 Rosetti Street, Revere, requesting parking structure, 29.5 feet by 17.8 feet, for storage purposes on Lot 1 at 20 Arcadia Street, Revere, and parking in the front yard variances to enable the appellant to convert a single-family Mass. The applicant has submitted photographs to the board to supplement his application. dwelling to a two-family dwelling on Lot 1 at 25 Rosetti Street, Revere.
Hello? Good evening.
Hi, John.
Please state your name and address for the record. Could you state your name and address for the record?
I'm John Capicella, an attorney from Boston, and I'm here to introduce my cousin Alex,
Mike Colletti, 30 Oak Island Street, Revere, Mass.
who's going to present to you.
Okay. Do you wish to continue where there's not a sufficient number of members?
My name is Alexander Capicella, from 19 Rosetti Street, here in Revere, Massachusetts.
Yes.
Okay. So, there's... Okay. I'll continue with the public hearing, and then we will vote on the continuance. Do you have anything to add to the application, or the application speaks for itself?
Okay.
Are there any proponents?
I do have a piece to add. I submitted a plan with three parking spots, but I went back to my land surveyor for a
Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. The next calendar item number? If I can just have a one-minute recess, I'm going to try to see where Harvey is.
second option, and he wrote up another plan with four parking spots in front of the lawn to see if you guys thought it was better that way.
Okay. Could you please present that to the clerk?
Sure.
Does he have the certified copy of this as well? Do you have it? Did you already get that, John, or no?
No. You mean the MyLa?
The MyLa.
He has it, I think, in...
Okay. You would have to present him with the MyLa plan?
Oh, yes. It's a classic, the original from... Okay.
Okay. Well, we'll continue on with the hearing. I will ask if there's any proponents. Anyone in favor? If you could kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Sandra Nicosia, Revere, 19 Rosetti Street, Revere.
Okay. And you are in favor of it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Patricia Capicella, 19 Rosetti Street, Revere.
Okay. And you're in favor of it?
I'm in favor.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing? All right. If you could just pass that down and leave it for Harvey to take a look at, we have our packet when he arrives.
The next application before the board is application A 1419. This is the application of Andrew Burke, 16 Pearview Avenue, Revere, requesting minimum side and rear yard variances for overhanging decks and for a variance exceeding the number of stories and building height to enable the appellant to construct a 26-foot by 35-foot three-story dwelling over 35 feet in height with front, side, and rear overhanging decks on Lot 1A at 16 Pearview Avenue at the intersection of an undeveloped section of Neptune Avenue, Revere.
Okay. Good evening.
Thank you. Chris Drew of RCA, The Architects, Record for the Project.
And your addresses?
415 Ponsadav, Dorchester.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to the application, or does the application speak for itself?
The application pretty much speaks for itself. The existing building is non-conforming. We're just basically trying to raise it up due to the flood plain that it's in, and just basically better the property than the current situation that it's in. It is actually two stories of habitable space. That lower level is just a garage with knockout panels. That is not living or anything like that. I know it was referred to as three stories, but I just want to make sure that it is realized that it is, in fact, only two habitable stories for the property.
Okay. I'll continue on with the hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing? All right. If you could just pass that down and leave it for Harvey to take a look at, we have our packet when he arrives.
The next application before the board is application A 1419. This is the application of Andrew Burke, 16 Pearview Avenue, Revere, requesting minimum side and rear yard variances for overhanging decks and for a variance exceeding the number of stories and building height to enable the appellant to construct a 26-foot by 35-foot three-story dwelling over 35 feet in height with front, side, and rear overhanging decks on Lot 1A at 16 Pearview Avenue at the intersection of an undeveloped section of Neptune Avenue, Revere.
Okay. Good evening.
Yes, Chris... Thank you. Chris Drew of RCA, The Architects, Record for the Project.
And your addresses?
415 Ponsadav, Dorchester.
Okay. Do you have anything to add to the application, or does the application speak for itself?
The application pretty much speaks for itself. The existing building is non-conforming. We're just basically trying to raise it up due to the flood plain that it's in, and just basically better the property than the current situation that it's in. It is actually two stories of habitable space. That lower level is just a garage with knockout panels. That is not living or anything like that. I know it was referred to as three stories, but I just want to make sure that it is realized that it is, in fact, only two habitable stories for the property.
Okay. I'll continue on with the hearing. Are there any proponents? Anyone in favor? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Have you spoken to the ward councilor for that area? Has this been presented to the ward councilor?
I believe it has, yes.
Okay. All right. As I stated before, you will have the right to offer a continuance, because there is... One vote would vote this down with a full majority of the members here. You would, at the next meeting, you would then be able to have... If two people voted it down, it would then be denied, rather than one.
Okay.
We do want to just make sure that you have that option to continue.
My name is Andrew Burke. I'm the owner of 16 Pearview Ave., and to answer your question, I have been in contact with the council.
Okay. Thank you.
The next application before the board is application A 1420. This is the application of Robert Cochrane, Barberan, LLC, 9 Whitney Road, Bauxford, Mass., requesting a lot area variance for each townhouse unit and a front yard setback variance to enable the appellant to petition the Revere City Council for a special permit to construct six townhouse units on lots 2, 3, and 4, also known as Lot Parcel A, B, and C, Northeast Expressway at 75 Lamson Street, also known as 41A Marble Street, Revere.
Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, honorable members. James Sipoleta, 385 Broadway, on behalf of your appellant. Gentlemen, several years ago, and probably a decade ago, I stood before the city of Revere on behalf of another gentleman, who is the current owner of this property, Mr. Ed Robichaud, and he received a special permit and some other relief from the Revere... City of Revere. At this point, Bob Cochrane is in an agreement with Ed, who's here this evening, to purchase the property, as Ed wants to... Needs to do some other things in his life. So, what Bob's proposal is, is set out on that plan, and we have just shy of 18,000 square feet. And Bob's proposal is to install on that slightly less than 18,000 square feet, six townhouse units. And each one of them, five of them will have their own garages. The last will have parking, as delineated on the plan, outside of the unit. There are two reasons why we need relief from the zoning Board of Appeals. The first is, it is required to have 3,000 square feet of land per unit. We're about 232 square feet short of the 18,000. So, we're looking for a variance which is nearly diminutive in the overall scheme of things. The other is with regard to the location of the building, and Bob can show you this on another plan that he has with him. The shape of the lot is triangular. And were it not for the shape of the lot, but more specifically, were it not for a public utilities and sewer easement that runs through the middle of the property, we wouldn't have to shift the buildings toward the corner where it's indicated that it would encroach into the front yard setback. So, it encroaches about half the distance of the required setback in that corner. And if I could just hold up that board, Bob has outlined the easement in yellow, and that's the line behind which Bob needs to stay. As I stated, were it not for that easement, he could push these forward, he would get out of that corner, and he would not need the relief from the setback.
Could you pass that up so we can take a look at it? Because visually it was impossible to see it on there.
I'm sorry. Also, while the chairman has the council board, on the back of that is a front elevation of the proposed townhouse development. It may look a little bit familiar, because my suspicion is that we drive by something that looks a little bit like that almost every day. And the reason is that Bob had built these similar townhouses down on Revere Beach Parkway right at the bend near the gas station, as you would take the bend on the Parkway and head west. So, the quality of his work and his ability to stand behind his product has been proven in the city of Revere. I would suggest, Mr. Chairman and members, that all of the conditions preceding to the grant of a variance, because of the topography, the shape, and the public easement that allows or requires a restriction in the placement of the building, causes a hardship...
I'm not sure if he's going to want to...
...hardship to the owner.
Nope.
If... Sorry. If, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, to take the second part of the presentation, which is the more nitty-gritty and technical, if Mr. Cochrane could address. Also, I would suggest, just as the last point, traffic flow, Marble Street, and around also to Grover is a private way, I believe, but it is passable, and people do come and travel on that. And this, again, is between the Stop &amp; Shop and the Route 1 Off-Ramp. So, it's sandwiched there in the shadow of Stop &amp; Shop. That would be a butt on one side, and the Route 1 on Off-Ramp is on the other side. So, with the permission of the chair.
Now, not to get into a lot of detail, but this would go in front of the city council for a special permit?
Indeed.
So, all we need to know about is all the variance?
Yes.
So, you can keep it brief. Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Cochrane, sole manager of Bob Aaron LOC, 9 Whitney Road, Bauxford, Massachusetts. Jim has pretty much covered everything. We do need the two variances he spoke of. We were on the agenda, unfortunately. We all know what happened Monday night with the city councils to seek that special permit. But we're here in front of you tonight to look to get a vote on these two variances in hopes of being in front of the city council sooner than later.
My only question would be that you already spoke to the ward councilor of that area you've been in?
Yes. Yes, I've been in constant contact and communication with Councilor Patch, also with the president of the city council.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing that this is a public hearing, I will ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? Please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name's Ed Robichaud. I own the property in question, as well as the abutting property at 41 Marble Street. My address is 251 Allen Street in Randolph, Massachusetts, and I'm in favor of this.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Any opponents? Anyone opposed? Any members wish to speak? No? Okay. We'll continue on to the next calendar item number.
The next application before the board is application A 1421. This is the application of Lynn Vignen, 140 Prospect Ave., Revere, requesting minimum parking space dimension variance to enable the appellant to create four undersized off-street parking spaces on Lot 55A at 140 Prospect Ave., Revere.
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Hi, my name is Mike Feng. Feng 40 Studio of Architecture at 204 Adams Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts, year 2122, representing Mr. Lynn Vignen.
Lynn Vignen, 140 Prospect Ave., in Revere.
Okay. Thank you. Do you wish to add anything to the application, or the application speaks for itself?
Pretty much, yes.
Okay. I will continue on with the hearing and ask if there's any proponents? Anyone in favor? If you could kindly step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
My name is Larry Strong. I'm at 138 Prospect Ave., and I'm not sure if I'm a proponent or whatever. I just wanted to make a couple of references, because I haven't talked to anybody yet about this. And I was hoping that when they put the driveways in, that they would mark the lot line so that the people who come in and put in the driveways would put it in properly, so there would be no problems. And the other issue I had was the water runoff from that particular driveway. The way the driveway is now, there's a nice hill of earth that keeps the water running down the back. Once they cut into that, which they will, I'd like to know if we could have a berm to keep the water running down rather than into my... Other than that, I think it's a fine thing. So, I don't know. Does that make me a proponent, or is this the wrong place to bring this up?
Well, it should have been spoken to them prior to this meeting.
I work. I work, so I haven't seen anybody. I just got the letter in the mail, and somebody called, and I called back, but...
Okay. But you got the letter a couple of weeks ago, am I correct? It didn't just come to you?
I got the letter about the meeting, yeah. I'm not sure how long ago it was, because I work, so...
All righty. So, you looked at the plan, realizing that these are side-by-side right to the lot line?
See, nobody lives there right now, so there's... You know, unless I bump into one, we're not going to see him anymore. Yeah. The only concerns I have, and it's not really a concern of anything they want to do, I just wanted to make sure that the lot line was marked so that the contractor who comes in doesn't go over. And also, when they dig into that hill, it'd be nice if they could say, well, there'll be a berm there so the water will run down or run back, but won't run into the yard. Now, I wasn't sure if this is where you do this, or where you would do this. So, am I a proponent or opponent? I don't know if that even matters.
Okay. Is there continuing? Are there any other proponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Opponents? Any opponents? Hearing not all closed outside of the hearing. Have you met with the ward councilor for this? Have you spoken to the ward councilor?
Yes, we have. We have been playing phone tags. Actually, I've been trying to contact you yesterday.
Yeah, I was all bad. They said you were...
Okay. And not... I'm not talking about the abutter. I'm talking about the ward councilor that represents the area for the city.
I contacted him, then I left a message, and he called me back. We've been playing phone tags.
So, playing phone tag. Okay. So, I suggest that you ask for a continuance for this?
Yes.
Because, again, it only takes one vote to vote this down, and you wouldn't be able to come back. So, at the end of the meeting, when we ask, you can request a continuance for this.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
The next calendar item number?
The next application before the board is application A 1307. This is the application of Vincent Chaketti, 54 Oak Ridge Terrace, Lynnfield, requesting a six-month extension of City Revere Board of Appeals variance A 1307, granted on July 31, 2013, in accordance with the provisions of Section 10 of Chapter 48 of the Mass. Generalize.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
The particular variance granted allowed the billboard to be 75 feet in height upon construction and approval by the special permit of the city council. That particular case is still in litigation and will continue to be for the next six months. We would ask you to continue the variance for that time.
Okay. There... We're at a public hearing. We would have to go through the whole public hearing process. Is there any proponents?
Yeah, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing, John?
No, it's just a letter of extension.
So, we don't have to go through the whole public hearing process? Am I correct, John? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Once again, ladies and gentlemen, any applicants that appeared in front of us this evening, you do have the right to ask for a continuance. So, we will call each application, and then if you wish to have it continued, you please step up to the microphone and do so. Otherwise, we will ask for a roll call from the members here. We do have four members. It only will take one vote to deny the application. So, as we call these in, it would be... You would still have the right to come up and ask for a continuance. Our next meeting, I believe, is August 13th at 4:00 p.m. Okay?
The first application is the A 1414 special permit of Merck Brothers Realty Trust.
Do you wish to continue, or... We can go ahead and vote on that one.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. The next application before the board is application A 1416, special permit application of Michael Colletti.
Michael, what's your request?
Uh, continue it, please.
Okay. A motion to continue. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded? All in favor? Aye? Okay.
Mr. Bacilli? Mr. Corrin? Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mazzoni, yes. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
This is continued to August 13th at 4:00.
At 4:00 p.m.
The next application before the board is the application of Alexander Capicella, 25 Rosetti Street. Is that the extra plan that I showed Harvey, or no?
Do you want to vote, or do you wish to continue?
We wish to vote.
Okay. A vote?
They wish to vote?
Yes. So, they will be presenting you with the new MyLa, right?
Right. Yes. Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corrin?
Yes.
Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted.
Okay. You do have to present the new... The MyLa plan to the clerk as well?
Sure.
Okay. And then wait for him to send you approval.
This is the application A 1419 of Andrew Burke, 16 Pearview Avenue, Revere.
Yes, we'd like to move forward with a vote, please.
And you do realize that one vote would cancel... Would deny this application? Oh, you're going to go out this way here?
We're ready to proceed.
Are you ready to proceed with...
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Question now comes on granting the relief requested by the appellant. Mr. Bacilli?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Corrin?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. D'Angelo is absent. Mr. Mazzoni?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Colometto is absent. Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes. This is granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the application of Robert Cochrane, 9 Whitney Road, Bauxford, application A 1420.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, we will not be requesting a continuance, thank you.
Roll call?
Question now comes on granting the relief requested, Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Mazzoni? Yes, Mr. Colometto is absent, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is granted.
You're welcome.
Next application before the Board is application A1421, the application of Lynn Nguyen, 140 Prospect Ave., Revere.
That's being continued to the next calendar item?
Yes.
The next, till August 13th?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you will mutually meet with the, uh, butter?
Yes.
And then you should respectfully meet with the councilor, the ward councilor?
Yes.
And our next meeting would be August 13th at 4:00 PM.
Great. Question now comes on continuing this matter, Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Mazzoni? Yes, Mr. Colometto is absent, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, this is continued. Next application is application A1307, this is the application of Vincent Giacchetti, uh, for a six-month extension of the, uh, variance, A1307. Does he want to go?
Roll call? Roll call, he wishes-
Question now comes on granting the six-month extension, Mr. Bacilli? Yes, Mr. Corrin? Yes, Mr. D'Angelo is absent, Mr. Mazzoni? Yes, Mr. Colometto is absent, Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
Yes, the, the six-month extension granted. Uh, the next meeting of the Board is August 13th, 2014, at 4 o'clock.
Thank you, and good evening.